2015, Councilor Beazall, would you lead us in the salute to the flag, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
President Hay.
Here.
Councilor Bean.
President.
Councilor Boishman.
President.
Councilor Beazall.
President.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Deenatali.
Here.
Councilor Green.
President.
Councilor Joseph.
Here.
Councilor Caddy.
Here.
Councilor Kusmerik.
President.
Councilor Tran.
Yeah.
We will now have the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing a public hearing petition, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the Senate table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Hearing done, we'll move forward to the report of the Committee on Records. Councilor Green.
Yes, I'm happy to report for ten minutes from last meeting. Order.
I move that the report of the Committee on Records be adopted.
Second.
Motion, second, that the Committee on Records' report be adopted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Moving forward to Appointments Committee. Councilor Bean.
Mr. President, the Appointments Committee met tonight earlier. We had one new appointment, trustee of the public burial grounds, Donna Lassler, 421 Alpine Road, Pittsburgh, Mass. His term expires January 1st, 2018. We had three reappointments. One to the Airport Commission, Peter Kettle, 44 McIntyre Road, Pittsburgh, Mass. Term expires February 1st, 2018. We had two to the Council on Aging, reappointments, Peter Christensen of 109 Parsons Circle, Pittsburgh, Mass. His term expires January 1st, 2017. And Maureen McSheehee, 250 Mount Vernon Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. Her term expires January 1st, 2016. They were all unanimously approved by the Appointments Committee tonight.
Motion, second, that the Appointments Committee report be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Communications from her on to the mayor. Dear honorable councilors, I hereby appoint and ask your confirmation of Mr. Nicholas Squalia of 225 Scott Road, Pittsburgh, Mass., as an associate member of the Board of Appeals for a term to expire on January 1st, 2007. As of today, I am appointing Mr. Squalia as an interim associate member of the Board of Appeals until said confirmation is voted by the City Council. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. And I apologize if that's an incorrect pronunciation, but...
Squalia.
Squalia? Thank you. Sorry about that. Dear honorable councilors, I hereby appoint and ask you your confirmation of Mr. Eric Rodriguez of 114 Pritchard Street, Apartment 2RR, Pittsburgh, Mass., as an associate member of the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire on May 1st, 2016. Mr. Rodriguez will be filling the remaining term of Mr. Richard Marino. Effective immediately, I am appointing Mr. Rodriguez as an interim associate member of the Human Rights Commission until said confirmation is voted upon by the City Council. Sincerely, Lisa A. Wong, Mayor. And the other communication we have, councilors, from the Pittsburgh Retirement Board, the...
Put it in place, my daughter.
Place it on file in the clerk's office. Thank you. Moving forward to the agenda. First, we'll have a special presentation, Mr. Don Enjemy, regarding the Long Joe Classic Bicycle Race. Mr. Enjemy? Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here. It's kind of interesting to be here as well. A lot of these people I've grown up with and went to school with, haven't been back for a bunch of years. First, if I could, my condolences and thoughts to the Bean family for your loss this past The reason I'm here is, I'm not sure if anyone in the past from the Long Joe Race has ever come in and given an update or a status update on what we're doing and how we're doing. I think it's time, only because we're becoming more and more community-oriented, and we want to involve the community as much as possible. And yes, those are last year's bottles, water bottles. For those of you that don't know... Because the new ones aren't printed yet.
But these are new last years.
Those are new last years, yeah. Well, except yours. For those of you that don't know, we took over the race three years ago. I'm sure the majority of you know the race did not happen for two years. So we had one heck of a task in front of us to try to bring it back. We started the nonprofit Long Joe Foundation since then. So it's a nonprofit race. And to give you an idea of the growth that we've had, the first year we took over the race, we were a little bit skeptical on everything, as were sponsors and riders alike. We were pretty fortunate. The Long Joe Race has always been known, for you that don't know, and I just learned this three years ago, it's never been known as the Long Joe Classic. It's always been known as the Pittsburgh Race. Okay? And we didn't know that when we took it over. So it had that prestige and it had that history behind it. You all, I'm assuming, if you're in town, you know the legend of Long Joe. The first year we had the race, we had to fight, literally fight, for sponsors. After two years being absent, they came back and said, "Well, how do I know the race is going to happen? How do I know this is going to happen?" We ended up with 500 riders the first year we took over the race. Last year, we had 800 riders. This year, we're looking towards 800. I mean, I'm sorry, 1,000. So we're growing. We'll probably cap at about 1,000 or 1,100. To keep you know, that's what's going on in the cycling industry. But I think the couple of reasons I'm here is to, one, to create the awareness that the race is not going away. You know, there's skeptics, and I get why because of what's happened in the past. I was born and brought up in Pittsburgh. I haven't been around for 30-plus years. But as long as I'm alive, the race isn't going to die. That's how I feel. So I'm going to kick, bite, scratch to make sure this race happens every year. It has, and I'm sure the people that have been around for years, you know the economic impact this can have. If we bring in just 1,000 riders, they all bring families in, they fly in, they need hotels, they need food, they need gas, and they have kids. We're trying to incorporate community a little bit more than we ever have in the past. Last year, being from Pittsburgh, I got to tell you straight to your eyes, I was pretty We could have taken a shotgun in front of Old City Hall and shot it down towards Putnam Street and not hit a soul, as far as spectators. Pretty embarrassing. Although we're bringing the riders in, and what we've had to do because of the economic scenario where you live, we've had to bring the race to another city. And then we had to bring it to another city, had to bring it to Lomester and had to bring it to Worcester, for economic reasons. Pittsburgh's not sustaining itself financially. And again, the race isn't going to die in Pittsburgh until I'm dead. So one of the reasons I'm here is to let you know that we need your help, not asking for money, okay? But I'm asking for support. We need some, I need, because the people that run the race, I'm the closest, and I'm on the north shore of Boston, okay? The next person is Alan Cotay up in Burlington, Vermont. Next person is Jason Long Joe out in Utah, okay? And we're trying to run this race remotely. So we need the towns' fathers to get on board. And just so you know, through Sam, I'm not going to try your last name, Stephen, you can if you want to try, attempt it again. From just a social media standpoint, it's really cool that I see an upheaval and a surge in civic pride with the trash bag challenges and everyone's starting to take pride in the city again. That's really cool from a grassroots standpoint, from our standpoint for the race, but we need it from the top down as well, okay? We just need that support. Other cities, you know, Lisa, I'm sorry, the mayor, has come to the race. I don't know if you people, and I'm not going to ask you in front of everybody if you've ever been to the race or if you've been lately. This is your race, ladies and gentlemen. This is your race to lose. And we're not going to lose the race in Pittsburgh. One of the problems we've had because of the lack of sponsorship in Pittsburgh is we've had to go out and get major sponsors, Blue Cross, Blue Shield. Locally, we have Rollstone Bank. But there's Coors Mill Light, there's DCU, there's all these big sponsors. The fear of that is, they come to Pittsburgh, I'll give you an example of DCU last year. They brought in their, what they call, mobile branches, and they parked in each city. They were pretty happy, they were giving all kinds of stuff away in Lomester, all kinds of stuff away in Worcester. In Pittsburgh, they were giving stuff to each other. And they backed down big time. So what we're trying to do this year, and this is where I'm looking for your support, we're trying to really bring in kids. It's the old McDonald's methodology of marketing, if you don't get it, okay? You know, where there's kids, someone told me on the hallway, "Where there's kids, oh yeah, I'm coming, that's my daughter, oh, that's my grandchild, I'll come." You're all going to go and take pictures of your kids racing. So Sam is passing out a flyer that is going to hit the Pittsburgh and Lomester school system, that's 8,000 students, starting tomorrow, okay? Trying to bring in all these kids, and they start at three years old, and they go up to 14 years old. All these kids are getting medals, all these kids are going to be awarded, they're all going to be highlighted. The reason we're doing that is, one, to incorporate community, but the other reason is to keep the race sustainable financially. Because we can't have these big sponsors come in and have no eyes on their brand. They'll leave in a minute. So I'm asking the council, in the city, if you can, if you have children, come to the race, bring the kids down. And, you know, we'd love for you to step up, we'd love to put you in the pace car and Rick Reberti, mess your hair up. That'd be fantastic. Sorry. I don't take offense to that, Jeff.
Appreciate that.
You know, and one of the things, again, we're trying to incorporate the community part of it, is we're working with Joel, Mr. Caddy, in the Pittsburgh rides. We'll be there passing out stuff with him. We're trying to be involved more and more with the kids, more and more with the city. It's tough because we are remote. And again, that's why we're kind of tugging on your tailcoats, your coattails, whatever you want to wear, for that kind of support. That's, I'm trying to make it as short and sweet as possible because I know everyone's running behind. Volunteers, we're bringing in Mark Gohan from the CDC, and he's reaching out, and he's trying to grab all the volunteers for us as well. Boys and Girls Club in Lomester is participating. So what we're trying to do as a nonprofit is bring in all this sponsorship money and give back to those volunteer organizations. Pride. We want to help out Pride as well. So one of the things we really want to highlight is, as a race, we can't continue to rob Peter to pay Paul, meaning I can't have Lomester and Worcester pay for Pittsburgh as an ongoing event. It's just not going to work. And it's just going to be a point in time where the sponsors come up to us and say, "Well, that's not working in Pittsburgh, I want to back out of my money in Pittsburgh." Because they sponsor each individual race. One of the things we're doing also with, I'm sure you're all aware of, a gentleman named Jerry Beck. We've commissioned him to, we've got a sponsor, Pat Wyman's from Wyman's Zicker. He's trying to build the world's largest bike. The wheels themselves are five feet in diameter, if you can get a handle on that, okay? It's primarily for PR. We're going to try to call in the Boston TV stations, see if we can get some PR out of it. And we're going to drive it all around and park it in Pittsburgh, park it in Lomester, park it in Worcester, try to get some buzz going. But the other reason also is incorporating the kids, is having all the kids from the art schools build this, so it's incorporating the community. We're getting involved with an outfit in Cambridge called Cycle Kids. And what they require, we need more sponsorship money, but what they require is $15,000 per school. That way, we can come to the council and say, "Okay, pick a school." And Cycle Kids will come in, they'll donate $50 bicycles, they'll come in, they'll train, they'll give helmets, they'll, you know, train them on maintenance, on the safety, they'll even give the schools bike racks, in an effort to get kids back and forth, going back and forth to school on bikes, again. It's all about health, all about that kind of stuff. We understand that the obesity rate's pretty high, and we want to try to work on that as a foundation as well. Want to leave it as an upbeat scenario, so the purpose of my coming to the council is, again, just to pretty much knock on your door and say, "Kind of show up at the race, support it. We'd love to get you on, tell us you're there, come onto the mic, you can talk to the kids, you can talk to the, you can announce one of the races." You know, we've had people announcing the race for decades, and they're still here, they're still supporting the race. The riders love the race in Pittsburgh. And one of the things I have to mention before I leave the table is the city departments in Pittsburgh, since we've taken over the race, second to none. DPW, I tell you, they pull a rabbit out of a hat every year. They're just phenomenal, phenomenal. Police, fire, EMS. You know, we go to the, we're having a meeting next week, I think it's the 10th, to meet with all the city departments. In the past couple of years in the meeting, the people that are in control of their departments, they come in, same as last year, same, yeah, okay, great, we got it. It's that simple. So the departments, that's to be commended, the city departments are really to be commended, they make it easy to have the race in Pittsburgh. Okay? So I guess the moral of the story is, we need spectators. So we're trying from our end to try from the kids up to bring people in. And if you guys and ladies and gentlemen can bring people in from, it starts at the top. You know, we're starting next week, we're putting half-page ads in the Sentinel and the Telegram. I mean, we can only do so much because of budgets, just like everyone else. But we're trying to highlight as much as we can to put spectators on the streets. Anyone have questions?
Councilor Green.
I would like to just commend your efforts, Mr. Enjemy, and I would also like to mention that our very own FATV, our Pittsburgh Access TV, is always on board with...
Phenomenal.
...you know, being there taping all legs of that race. So we know that people watch the race, I mean, we get that data that says that they are watching the race. Unfortunately, they're at home in the privacy of their home doing that. But I would just like to mention that we are still very much involved with the race being televised from FATV. And my other question is, a couple of years ago, we had beautiful posters put down in the old Harper Furniture Building that highlighted the race specifically. I'm wondering if that is done through your organization that can get those back up, or if that's now...
That would definitely be yes. And I've spoken with, I've asked, okay, it was a Patriot tailgating party at the stadium, but Mark LaLancet, I was told, I believe, owns that building, or has something to do with that building. Thanks. And he said, "Yeah, go ahead, put the posters up." And we said, "Okay, great." And luckily, before we printed them, he hasn't returned, we haven't got any return calls. So that was one of our, we wanted to put stuff up there. We're putting a banner up right on the beginning of Main Street. That's going up, I believe, next week. We've already got approval for that, and all that's done. We tried a banner down in John Fitch last year, a little too high, and it was too small, kind of ineffective. And I believe last year, we couldn't put the banner up on Main Street because the, what do you call them?
Brack.
Thank you. Were broken on one of the buildings, so no one could utilize that, at least during that period of time during the race. So this year, we're going to have the banner up there as well. And again, we're trying to infiltrate from the schools, you know, get the parents involved and the kids involved to bring them down. We just got approved tonight to use Monument Park. We're going to have all kinds of kids' activities with face painting and balloons and rough, we had a bump in the road with a bounce house, but we got that approved. But we have a whole bunch of stuff and activities that we're really trying to incorporate to bring kids in. And absolutely, Dave, Dave Svensson's done a fantastic job, and is always an open arms with us. He's fantastic, the whole staff there.
Dave is now retired.
Yeah, I know, I know.
But we have a mate who's equally qualified and equally excited to be a part of it. So I just wanted to let you know that you still do have FATV support for your race for as long as you want to be here.
Thank you. No, we appreciate it. No, we appreciate it.
Councilor Joseph.
Fantastic job. Like grace, I mean, nothing's going to do it better than that, just to get people down, families downtown.
We hope.
I can see that could help dramatically. Nothing's better than the wind, wish of the wind as those guys go by, guys and girls. And I will make my commitment as a city councilor that there will be a Pittsburgh City Council Challenge Lap in every one of the races that you have this year.
You can't hear that, but that's a...
Oh, man.
Thank you.
You just can't wait to see them.
That always seems to charge up the races as they go around when they have a challenge lap. Do you see that one person just jump out of the crowd, out of the pack to get that lap?
And actually, last year, we tried to get the mayors from both cities to run a lap. For some reason, that didn't happen. I think Dean chickened out.
Okay.
Councilor Caddy.
Did you say you got those posters made already?
No. No, we did not print them yet.
Do you want to do that, or not?
Absolutely, yeah.
I've got a contact that we can do that with.
Fantastic. And the Minuteman Press has been just phenomenal down on Summer Street. Thanks. Can tell, been gone for 35 years.
And just, if you can, Pittsburgh Rides is the week before, and I'll...
Correct.
...bore the council another time, but the week before this event, we've raised funds to give away 50 bicycles to school kids.
Phenomenal.
So I'm hoping you can market that when you go to the schools for me.
Pittsburgh Rides, we're all about it.
Yeah. And what I'm worried about is I really wanted to go to Pittsburgh kids, and I heard you talk about Lomester kids coming in. I'm just hoping that this goes to Pittsburgh kids.
Yeah, well, Pittsburgh are going to have, these are passed off both Pittsburgh and Lomester schools, but my guess is the Lomester kids are going to go to Lomester and the Pittsburgh kid.
And so you know, the chief, I think we have 200 helmets to give away that day, which is, mine's a week before yours. And we have Pittsburgh State University and Pittsburgh Police Bike Patrols coming to put on a seminar for the kids.
Oh, cool.
Get the helmets fitted properly and give away 50 bikes. And just so I can plug, Rollstone Bank is paying for a professional BMX team to come in to put an exhibition. IC Credit donated for the bicycles, Fidelity Bank donated for the bicycles, and Pride donated for the bicycles.
Yeah, Rollstone Bank also donated money for helmets for us as well, to give to the kids.
And I want to agree with you that it's going to be the youth of the city that's going to make yours go. And I see nothing wrong with our city branding itself on bicycles. And, you know, we've got a long heritage with a bike race, with Ivor Johnson's made in Pittsburgh.
Right.
And I think it's time we get a brand, and I think we're right on target with this one.
Well, you know, the part that hits me, and I know the new president of the city, the Chamber of Commerce here, Roy, came from New Bedford, who did a great job. And by the way, I'm not sure if the appointment came from the council, but Mary Jo, great job. She did a phenomenal job in the chamber industry, and she'll probably do a great job here as well, really focused lady. But yeah, I think you're correct. One of the things that's driving me is the economic impact that this has. I don't know that there's a larger event in North Central Mass than the Long Joe Race was. And some of you have been around, I'm not sure who's from here and who's not from here, but I remember when I was a kid, in front of Woolworth's and Grant's, there were six or seven people deep cheering the riders on. And that's still my vision. That's still my vision. Not necessarily Woolworth's and Grant's, but the six or seven people deep. That can happen again. And we've, I'm new to the cycling industry. As you can tell by my physique, I'm not a rider. I heard you laugh behind me. But I also understand that it's one way for the city to grab an identity. I agree with you. And if we can bring in, another thing I didn't mention was these flyers for the kids are also being emailed to every member of the Chamber of Commerce this week. So we're trying to hit it from businesses, we're trying to hit it from residential side, we're trying to hit it from everywhere we can, and the bottom line is to get spectators on the streets so we can keep the money flowing.
Councilor Bean.
Welcome back to neighborhood, Don.
Thanks. I'm going home tonight.
And again, I want to thank you for your commitment and dedication to this race and the energy you put into it. I can remember the heyday of this race, and actually, one of the highlights when I was mayor was when Lance Armstrong won the race here, and we awarded him the key to the city and number one, but also went on to Barcelona from here, and it kind of, you know, gave this race kind of new stature after that point. And I hope to someday see that, come back to that. But I think one way the city council could be helpful, and maybe if you could work with maybe the city clerk or the city council president, is maybe we put together a resolution and kind of highlight some of these events we're having, and then the city council adopt the resolution, can use it as part of your marketing piece, that you know that the city's behind you and talking about that. Just a thought that might be helpful to help them in the marketing, help get...
Anything's going to help.
You may have a clerk or I, and we'll hook up and talk about that.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
But again, thank you for your commitment, and as long as you're alive, we'll have this, that's great. So long live Don, I guess.
Long live Long Joe. And by the way, he's buried right across the street from us. I went to see his stone a few minutes ago. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it and hope we see you at the race.
Next, councilors, we have a special presentation from the Collins Center regarding information technology purchasing and law city departments. This is individuals from UMass Boston, Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management. We have Monica Lamboy, Susan Adler, and Richard Daly. And you should have a handout here of their PowerPoint presentation, which is organizational study of IT department, law office, and purchasing department, city of Pittsburgh. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
And thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Wong, Council President Hay, and members of the city council. I'm Monica Lamboy from the Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. My colleagues are Susan Adler and Dick Daly. And we're very pleased to be here this evening. If you don't know about the Collins Center already, we are part of the UMass Boston system. We were created by the state legislature, specifically with a mission to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of government at all sorts of levels. Local government, school districts, we've worked with regional governments as well, and do work such as the study we did here, which we call an organizational study. We also do recruitment, we do training for supervisors and managers. Largely, any kind of problem you guys can identify, we can field a team to work on it. And most of us come out of local governments, we've been in the trenches, we know what the life is like trying to accomplish all the many things that have to be accomplished in a short amount of time with not enough resources, ever. So with that, I'll move into the presentation. Tonight, we'll talk about the components of the study, the process that we followed. Most of the discussion will be our findings and recommendations and questions that will arise. Hopefully, we can get through the whole presentation and then take all your questions, as long as you have interest. So we were asked to look at three departments, the Information and Technology Department, the Law Department, and the Purchasing Department, largely with the same question, looking at the structure of those departments, the responsibilities, and the practices they follow to give ideas for improving departments and acknowledging the good work that does go on on a daily basis here. And any kind of recommendations we had for staffing, practices, and other kinds of improvements. We spent quite a bit of time here, met with many of your managers and staff members, and thanked them for the time that they offered to us. Susan also had an opportunity to talk to the council president, specifically about the Law Department. We did do a survey of other law departments, which Susan can touch on, or if you have questions about that, there's an appendix in the larger report with the results. And also looked at the purchasing department registers and other kinds of records to try to understand the sort of the volume and level of activity in the purchasing department from whatever resources were available. So that kind of goes in, we mix that around, and we start thinking about making findings and recommendations. So I'll turn it over to Dick Daly.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. For Information Technology Department was created by the mayor consolidating IT resources in the city in 2008. consolidating IT resources in the city in 2008, ending up with an IT manager, a systems administrator, and a help desk technician, which was a part-time, 19-hour-a-week position going from 2011 up until July of last year. The IT manager came from the Planning Department. He was a GIS MIS analyst. He has a bachelor's degree in geographic information systems. And assistant administrator is, came from the Police Department. He was a crime analyst. However, he has a BS in computer science from Pittsburgh State. Done a lot in the last, in 2008, there's been a significant amount of infrastructure improvements, a big one being being able to move City Hall to its current location. That was a large project. But created a new computer room, a new voiceover internet system for the city, connected the major buildings with a photographic network, and did a lot of replacing and upgrading of server and desktop equipment. In the software area, a number of initiatives, Commonwealth Connect, the C Click Fix solution for citizens, DocuWare, digital document storage software, Cartograph for DPW and asset management software, Vertical Wave Viewpoint and View Permits, permitting software for the city. So quite a bit done. Finding number one, felt in talking with a lot of department heads and IT, come up with the finding that the organization reporting relationship to the IT department is unclear, whether that department reports to either mayor or the Finance Administration Director, that unfill position at this point. The recommendation is that the IT department should be responsible, support of all IT-related activities in the city, and the IT manager needs to be acknowledged as a leader and advocate for IT in the city. Behind that is another unique situation in the city. The unique situation in the city is that support for the major administrative and financial system is handled by the assessor. And our recommendation is to move that responsibility to the IT manager, so he has the entire picture of, and support for the city. The IT department should report to a position that is citywide, with a citywide perspective, vision, authority, and time to regularly work with the staff. That's either the mayor, or I know that the consideration is being given to a chief operations officer. Either way, that person would have that global view of what's happening in the city, rather than having it under a finance, typically a finance situation where there's, tends to be focused on those type applications, rather than the total city needs. Okay, finding number two, there's no plan or strategy for enhancement and maintenance of city IT infrastructure. You need a plan, particularly because IT initiatives frequently do the funding or just absorption within the city, extend over a year, or maybe two. So you really need that plan in place. What are you going to do over that longer period of time? This is not unusual, by the way. I find this quite frequently in cities and towns and the Commonwealth. Recommendation, the second one is should establish an information systems technology steering committee. All right. And essentially, there, we're looking at the IT manager, from that person's perspective, is deluged with departments asking for support, asking for new systems, asking for whatever. And how does that manager decide what's the most important thing? The squeaky wheel type of syndrome frequently happens here. We don't want that to happen. And the way to prevent that is to create this committee formed of the major users of IT systems within the city. And that committee prioritizes projects and aligns things with the long-term view of where the city wants to go in technology. Finding number three, there's no standard process for commercial off-the-shelf software selection and implementation. All right. Again, the steering committee is another major player in this. They should be involved in looking at and reviewing any proposed software solution by a particular department. Primarily, look at, does it integrate with all the other systems we have? You just don't want a situation where things are not working together. And a standard process should be followed to select and implement the software. I think that the View Permits software project is one where View Permits is partially implemented. View Permits has some wonderful benefits for the city, and this type of process will kind of move that along, driven into other areas of the city where it's, the benefits can be shown. Finding number four, you have a small IT department, two people. The staff, the help desk position is not staffed at this point. We're recommending making that a full-time position, because the issue here is that the help desk type requests, my printer is down, I have a problem with Word, all that type of requests are frequent for a city. I think you have 388 employees in the city. So the two people staffed in the IT department now are deluged with that type of support. In addition to that, they also do the phone bill reconciliation type of thing. So the idea here is let's move up and be able to apply their good skills to hire and better, more beneficial activities, and let the help desk person deal with the base type support in the city. Thank you. And now Susan Adler will take over and talk about the Law Department.
Thank you. The Law Department is provided for in the city code, as you know. The city solicitor is appointed by the mayor, and then the code provides that the city solicitor is authorized to appoint an assistant. These are for one-year terms. Between the two of these positions, they handle most of the routine legal work for the city. The division of labor that's shown on this slide is, it's a function of how the current incumbents have agreed to divide up the work. It's nothing that's mandated. And as you know, the code also provides that the city solicitor attends council meetings and certain committee meetings. It is common, as Pittsburgh does, to use outside counsel when there's an issue of where a specialized practice can bring in particular expertise. And these are the typical kinds of areas that, where Pittsburgh's practice is very much like any other city or towns. Overall, our findings and recommendations relating to the Law Department fall into two categories. The first are administrative and logistics issues, and the second is the choice of models that are available to secure legal services for the city. That is, either by engaging attorneys as employees or contracting for legal services with attorneys as vendors. So this first finding falls into the administrative logistic area. And what we find is that because the constraints, the physical constraints of the city offices, the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor operate from their private law offices and come into City Hall quite frequently to meet and work on problems and work with groups of department heads. But there is something that's lost there, we believe, which is the kind of interaction that you get with a colleague who you see on a daily basis. Employees expressed quite broadly that they miss having the opportunity to have these casual spur-of-the-moment kinds of interactions that can be very fruitful in the sense of getting a question answered quickly, rather than forgetting to get the answer for it, having a quick resolution to a problem, or having a quick question because of the attorney's expertise. They discern that there is something larger at stake, and they can get an early jump on it. We believe there's value in these kinds of casual contacts for both the lawyers and their clients. And our recommendation that there be regular office hours in the city offices is an attempted workaround, or the logistics problem, that there is not office space for them in City Hall. And we also would say that this time should be set aside for as open office hours, and that if there need to have a scheduled meeting with a department head or someone, that that be set aside at a different period of time. Our other finding, our next finding, is that, and this again is more of an administrative matter, although they are carried, the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor are carried on the city's payroll as employees, they have not been required to provide time and attendance information as part of the payroll process. And we just think that this is something that would, it's appropriate, since they are employees, that they should be dealt with as other employees are. And I believe the mayor has indicated she's already taken steps to address this issue that we've raised. There's a provision in the code that authorizes clerical assistance and, quote, reasonable expenses for the Law Department. The current practice is to provide for clerical assistance and expenses by way of a stipend. In the FY '14 budget, we looked at '14 because it's a closed period, allocated $24,000, which seems to be a very modest amount of money when you consider the costs of operating an office for the benefit of the city. The city solicitor and the assistant city solicitor share it on a 70%, 30% basis. Our recommendation is just really not, does not reflect any concern that the monies are not being used appropriately. I want to make that very clear. But we're recommending that if this practice is continued in the future, the recipients file a memorandum that sets out how they intend to apply the funds to the expenses of their private office operation. A brief memo would serve to make the connection between the payment and the expenses that are incurred by the Law Department members, and would be just another way of documenting that the reasonableness standard has been met. Our last finding relating to the Law Department addresses the issue of how the city chooses to engage legal services. The finding is that securing legal services through municipal employees, rather than through outside counsel, has varying benefits and challenges, which each city should evaluate to determine what model best meets their needs. And our recommendation is that prior to the appointment of a city solicitor by a new mayor, the mayor should consider issuing a request for proposals for city solicitor services, evaluating the responses, and determining whether legal service, legal needs can best be met at an acceptable cost by continuing the longstanding practice of employing a city solicitor, or by contracting with a non-employee provider, which could be either an individual or a law firm. We took a look at what the practice is in other communities. In this area, we tried to survey in quite a good sampling. Our response rate was somewhat disappointing. There is one community, Lemister, has chosen to contract with a large Boston law firm that specializes in municipal law. In other communities, there is a mixed, I would say, experience. There are attorneys who work directly for the city in their law departments. There are attorneys who maintain private practices in that community or other communities and contract to be the pride city solicitor services. If the question is, were posed, which is the best way to operate, the answer could only be there is no single best way. There are many factors that would go into determining how to retain legal services and what waits to assign those factors. And those will vary from community to community based on each one's needs, experiences, and values. Our recommendation is that although this is not required by state law, the mayor should go through the process of looking at the variables, including costs, and determining what model and what provider will be the best fit for Pittsburgh. And the third section of our report deals with procurement.
Currently, the purchasing department has three full-time positions, all of them as professionals: the chief procurement officer, the deputy procurement officer, and the procurement officer. Over time, since 1995, the staffing has fluctuated between two to three FTE with quite a bit of variation. There's an appendix in the report that sort of goes through the different positions that were filled at different periods in time. Since last year, they have not had any clerical support in the department, although that was not the case in the past. We looked at the total number of purchase orders in this slide from the register that the chief procurement officer keeps. So it is a handwritten list of purchase orders and contracts, and then a third one that is for school contracts and purchase orders. So what you can see here is even in this snapshot, and these are not all of the purchases or all of the purchase orders that are issued for the city, I want to emphasize that. This is what's on these handwritten lists. But you can see, even though we're talking about only a portion of it, we're well over $10 million worth of expenses each year, in the order of 70 to 100 contracts, sorry, 30, around 50 to 60 to 70 contracts a year, and then purchase orders as well. So the first finding is that a considerable amount of the work in the purchasing department is routine from year to year. So if you imagine road salt, the types of chemicals you need in your water treatments and your sewer treatments, the need for cars and various kinds of vehicles throughout the years, not the big heavy equipment. But there are a number of things that are routine year to year. And in the report, we actually did some tallying of the types of things, computer equipment, licenses for software, and copiers and things like that. So the first recommendation is to help aid the procurement department in organizing its year and its time. The department should each year identify what they anticipate as their expenditures. And I believe the mayor's already doing that with the budget processor, at least for a while, that the department should say, you know, if you have X dollars in your professional services line, what do you anticipate using it for? If you have a certain amount in your supply line, what are those going to be used for, and when do you need it? So procurement can start to organize the year. The second thing is that they really should work with the heavy users, your IT department, your water, your wastewater, and the DPW to consolidate bids, purchase orders, and contracts. So what we did see was multiple contracts for the same type of work, or multiple purchase orders for computers. Sometimes there would be multiple purchase orders in the same day with the same vendor for computers, perhaps. If the work is, if the routine work is streamlined, then the department will be better equipped to handle the emergencies that arise. And emergencies always arise. There's no city or town that doesn't have those. So figuring out how to streamline the routine work would, could go a long way to aiding some of the, getting rid of the backlog. We also found that a number of the current agreements have short lifetimes. Not all of the register-listed contracts had end dates, but where they did have end dates, we noted that sometimes it could be a few days after the agreement was actually listed in the register as having been approved. Sometimes, some services that you know you would likely need year-round, like perhaps elevator maintenance, you would want to have somebody available for that. That contract may not be a full-year contract. The report has specific examples. So recommendation is to issue three-year contracts using one base year and two extensions as often as is reasonably possible. Doing an extension is a lot less time-consuming than starting a new contract and a bidding process from the beginning. And if you found a good vendor that you were happy with, you would continue them, but there's always the option to discontinue if you weren't happy after the first year. The other is to pre-qualify some of the kinds of vendors that are just reasonably needed, particularly where it has to do with construction, electrical, plumbing, your HVAC, your emergency generator. Get those companies pre-identified, pre-qualified, so that if you have an immediate need, all you have to do is send out some quotes to find out what's it going to take to repair the emergency generator at the fire department, and who can get here quickly. So that will help, when you do have emergencies, help smooth those over and make them not as intense. The finding 11 is that the department does not appear to be using technology as much as it could to make the work efficient. We noted that the purchase order form itself is an Excel We noted that the purchase order form itself is an Excel spreadsheet, but most of the content of it is, is words. So using an, a numeric spreadsheet for a Word-based document is just very hard to format. I've done it myself. There are a number of contract templates. I'm not a procurement officer, but there really were a large number of templates. Is that confusing? Is there a way to use forms even before you go to a high-level computer system? Are there ways to use forms where you check certain boxes so that you know certain provisions apply or don't apply? Recommendation here is to acquire one or more of the Munis modules. In the report, we lay out a number of modules. The reason we're recommending Munis is because you already have a Munis-based system. We don't typically recommend particular vendors, but it will link right into your financial system. But they offer requisitions as one module where the user departments will input what they need. It will go through a financial check, go to the mayor, and then we go to the procurement department for processing. There's other modules, like the contract module, so that once something has been, a vendor identified, that will actually encumber the money in the financial system. And importantly, for yourselves as policymakers, for the mayor, as the overall administrator, you would have numeric data available to you that's not available right now to know the exact number of procurement activity that, that is happening on an annual basis. In the interim, we're recommending that the, the paper handwritten register be converted at a minimum to an Excel spreadsheet on a shared folder so that at least you could cut and paste, and that the field that says the end date of the contract should, should absolutely be used. Because another way to avoid an issue is if, if a department's contract is about to end, if they get an advance notice, they can either tell the procurement officer that they don't need it anymore, in which case it's, it's off. Or if they do need that service, people can start to do the work ahead of time instead of waiting for contracts to expire, which happens to all of us. But, but even an Excel spreadsheet could really help with a advance notice prior to expiration. Other recommendations in this area is to either work with the ID, IT department or a Word expert to, to work on those contract templates so that there's not multiple versions. Just make it easier for everybody. And that the purchase order template should be in Word. This is sort of practical stuff, but it, it actually can change, save time. And that if there were any particular legal provisions that one would want on all your documents, you can just print that on the back of the, the purchase order. Finding 12 is that a collaborative relationship between departments and the purchasing department is essential to both of them being able to accomplish their missions. And the, ideally, it's a meeting of two experts. You have a department official who knows what the department needs, who knows how the, their department is organized. You have a procurement expert who understands the State Procurement Act and also understands Fitchburg's processes. And together, they, they come to a solution that ends with an outcome of having a vendor and having the service or the goods that you needed. The, the process is not an end unto itself. Right now, having spoken with a lot of people, there is a lot of tension in the relationship between departments and the purchasing department. All, all had good points, but the big picture point is that they need to work together and figure out how to do that. So to this end, we recommend that the purchasing department should report to a position that has a citywide perspective, vision. One of the areas of tension is that the purchasing officer is a peer to other department heads, and oftentimes it's difficult for that peer-to-peer relationship when there have to be corrections and revisions. Right now, where there's disputes, they go to the city solicitor or to the mayor to try to resolve that. If there is a chief operating officer, that would be an ideal position to manage procurement and to have the authority to figure out which way to go. Regular practical training. The best way to make work easy is to have good inputs. So the more that the customer knows, in this case, it's the, the user department, the better the quality of work that's sent to the procurement department, the easier it is for the procurement department to get its job done. And that involves regular training, involves putting sample scopes of work out, creating templates for departments so that it could be easy for them to do what they need to do. Here's an electronic library of well-written scopes of work that people could look for, particularly for things that, that we did last year. Let's just copy from the year before. And then if the restricted office hours remain in place, and I understand why they were put in place, which was to try to allow the procurement staff the, the time and the space to get the complex work that needs to get done, there done. There should be regular meetings with the, with the heavy user department so that they know that they will have their question answered on a certain day because the constant traffic in and out of the office can be disturbing. Finding 13, the staffing in the department appears high relative to the volume of work with a caveat that it was difficult to identify the full volume of work. But in the report, we tried to look at how many purchase orders were issued in other communities versus in Fitchburg, and had a little bit of difficulty getting that information. Was using, tried to use checks cut as a proxy. The auditor was helpful with that. And also, I looked at some of the grant reports, checks cut for grants. But either way, it's a, three professional staff is, is higher than other departments, such as Salem, which does a tremendous amount of work. Even as I'm saying that there's a lot of staff, the, the need for clerical support is real. There are low-level tasks that are being done by higher-level personnel, answering the phones, talking to people that are coming in, opening the inter-office mail. And when you have a higher level, a more capable person doing this low, lower level, it's just not a good use of the public resources. So with that, we are open for any questions or comments.
...for your presentation. I'd also like to thank the three of you for the work and the report that you put together for us. Counselor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I thank you for the comments and for coming out here. Appreciate the work you do and, and that.
I guess my question is maybe to the city council president or to the mayor is, as I, as I, as you went through this, there are a lot of good ideas in that. Some of those, I guess, could be done immediately by the department head, and some might require ordinance changes or funding. And I guess my point to, to you, to the mayor, a number of those very simple things that could be done, that's something that we don't, as a council, don't have to approve. We just, here's a presentation. That's something you're going to implement as mayor to require the department to do? You know, some of those things are just more internal issues? Okay, that's just, and I don't know if we need to do approval or anything like that on this, or we're just here to listen, I guess.
Madam Mayor.
I would say the workflow items are things that we can implement internally. But in terms of the recommendations to purchase Munis modules, you'll see that they're fairly expensive in terms of one-time costs and ongoing operating costs. Those will all have to be approved by the council. We recommend that, it's not coming directly from me, but we either create an IT steering committee or a group of interested department heads to come to that conclusion. Because I don't feel comfortable making a unilateral decision to spend upwards of $100,000 on software. I really think that, that we need to bring users to the table. And then in terms of the clerical staff or chief operating officer, those are all proposed by me and approved by you on a yearly basis. So I can only speak to what's before you this year.
Right. My thing is more the internal, you know, the documents going in the purchasing department. Some of this stuff is now paper, putting that on, on, those are the type of things I was thinking about, just more efficiency. And talking about efficiencies with the, with the purchasing department, I've, I've had the opportunity to work with NIGP, the National Institute of Government Purchasing Agents, over the years in, in my professional career. And a lot of the purchasing departments across the country are now using state contracts, regional contracts, and national cooperative purchasing programs for their purchasing of goods, services, and materials, which cuts down a lot of the process. And, and I've always wondered, and I've spoken to the, to the procurement director here in the past about using, you know, cooperatives, and I didn't really get an answer for it, but I don't know if we do. But I, I, do we do that, do we do that today? And do you know much about the, I mean, what I hear is it's a good way of saving money and saving time and effort because it's already been done.
I mean, I know in our office that we do, we have to go to the state register first. It's a good practice to do that. If you feel like you can beat that price, then, you know, more power to, to the community to try to do that. But it can save the time. I will point out the state database is not easy to use necessarily as well, but it certainly worth a, a look to see if there's good competitive prices already for the service that you're looking for or the goods.
Thank you.
Counselor Green.
Couple of questions. Did you find in your recommendation in dealing with staff that, would it be a safe assumption to say that there are staff members who need training in the most basic Excel, Word programs?
I didn't really ask that question, did you?
We, we, I heard that from, from a number of department heads. They're looking for that. They're looking for more training in the Microsoft Office area. And they're also looking for more training in Munis, which is the basic, you know, the, the base financial administrative system. Now, that's been in place since 1999. So typically, what happens is, in a community is, you install it, there's training done, and then it's hard to fund that ongoing training. So, yeah, there was, there was a call from that, from a number of departments. We'd like to see some training in that area.
Right, because I think, again, moving forward, when I hear that we're still using handwritten lists in, in modern times, when there are preset templates and programs available that, once we get them installed and train people on the most basic format of that, then we can, you know, retrain, retrain, and it's just, it helps with the process. Because, and again, then when I hear that there's routine purchase orders that can be done and submitted that don't change from year to year, consolidate the bids, multiple purchase orders for the same, either from the same department or the same item, and do we not have the capability to have a preferred vendors? I mean, no, I'm a preferred provider in the medical community. So I know that there has to be a preferred vendors list that we can just point and click to, that Noah's taken care of us in the past, we can continue to use them, they've been fair, they've been reasonable, that it just can't be that easy. And did you get a sense on how much or how many complex procurements we're doing versus just the, kind of the day-to-day, you know, run-of-the-mill procurements?
It's, it's definitely a mix of both. I mean, you could certainly see, I know there were some sewer emergencies in the stream, the airport project that we called out. Certainly, the relocation of City Hall was a huge project. So it's a mix. And I think that was my point, is where there, where there are items that are common or over time, to try to make those as, as streamlined and as efficient as possible, then you have the time for the more complex work. I mean, it's an ambitious community. I know you're trying to do a lot of work. It's important to have the time to, to do that kind of, of work. That's forward-thinking, that's advancing the goals of the, of the mayor and the council.
And again, moving forward, I think it's important that if we're going to have department heads put forth requisition forms that they, you know, that everybody's using the same form, and they know how to do that, and it's, it's electronic, it's a click of a button, and then it gets sent to your mailbox on a shared folder, and then everybody's on the same page. So that when we come and ask, how many real procurements are we doing? And where are we, you know, in the, in the flow of getting it done? I mean, we've got projects that, I mean, this, you know, I've been sitting on council for two, only two years, but we've got projects that were brought forth two years ago that I have, I have no timeline on where they are in the process of being finished or completed. So I, I would just like to be able to see that. And I'd like to think that it could happen. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
And it just bothers me. How much did we spend for the study?
$25,000.
Don't take this personal, but I just see it as being a report that's going to be put up on a shelf. Every question that I have has no, doesn't pertain to your presentation. It's the implementation of what you found. I really don't think that you'll be involved in the implementation of anything that you found. You've only given us recommendations on what could be done. And I can't see this being done by one person. I can see it, take this report, give it to the mayor. The mayor sets up a committee, and somebody goes out and rectifies these problems or identifies them and, and rectifies them. I, I just don't, with an outgoing mayor and, you know, a new person coming in, I, I just see this as being a downtown study, a traffic study. You know, it's just, unfortunately, I, I think that you did a great job. You've identi, you've hit the nail on the head on a lot of issues. You've just touched the surface on a lot of others. When you said things like, people said that they would like to have more of a spur-of-the-moment interaction with the law department if they were in City Hall. If you're in Leamester and you want to see an attorney for the city, I think you have to be allowed by the mayor to be able to speak to that person. And, and so there's no spur-of-the-moment interaction unless you go to the mayor with a specific issue. So I mean, we have things that are, that other cities don't, but which is better, again, what model is better. But spur-of-the-moment interaction, you know, how does that work when your attorney is in Boston? You know, so I, I just see that, yeah, we would love to have that, but is that, is that necessary? Does that, does their model work even though they don't have that? But those are questions that you're not going to answer for us, that we need to answer for ourselves. And I just, I just would like to know from the mayor what her next step with this report would be.
Yeah. I, I think what I want to do is, there's a lot of stuff that's pretty foundational, and I don't see this going on a shelf for the next mayor. But I do see that there are things that I would want to set up, but then not make that final decision, because I wouldn't want to do that to the incoming mayor. So for example, the law department, what I would like to do is to have us answer the questions in terms of what are all the values that we have. So we actually had a department head meeting this morning in which we talked to the staff about the FaceTime and about the issues and the things that they work with the legal department about. So I'd like to provide that inventory, the survey, and develop an RFP, but not issue it. So that the next mayor who comes in can see each department's individual legal needs, including the time. And then they can also have an RFP that they can choose to put out there just to compare. But I'm not going to change out a law firm the next six months, because it's, it's a year-to-year appointment anyways. But we are going to implement, and we've already implemented just the payroll recommendations. So, you know, the city solicitor and assistant city solicitor are going to be similar to HR in which they already report their time off. So by deduction, there's the payroll. But now we'll actually officially have it. Instead of, I approve it, it goes to payroll, we'll just create basically a paper trail so that I can approve it, not in separate emails, but in the legitimate document. Those are kinds of things that we can do systematically. In terms of the office hours, we've already talked about, about setting those up. So that's sort of the law department. The IT department, there is a line item for clerical that's before the council right now. So whether that's implemented right away is something that we need to discuss. I really like the idea of the IT steering committee. Again, I am not an expert. So right now, the IT is really reporting to me. They come to me for approval, project by project. We sort of talk about a plan for a year. You know, I think about it in a relationship to my goals, but I'm not an IT expert. I'm an operational person who says, this is good for my vision. But I would love to have a steering committee in place where we actually bring in folks who can approve that long-term plan. We don't have a long-term plan in place. We have maybe a year plan, and we go from year to year. And what we try to do is we try to save up money for the long, like the big projects we want to do. We always do those end of year because we don't know what kind of emergencies happen from year to year. The IT steering committees don't allow us to change that and be much more proactive. The purchasing division, we're phasing out the staff. So the procurement officer, his last day was Friday. So as of this week, we only have two FTE. What we're sort of waiting for is we're waiting for not only this report, but we're waiting to also know what kind of changes we're going to have. So we're already doing the pre-planning. But as they noted, we can pre-plan all we want, but if department heads fail to tell us what projects there are until the last minute, those are the kinds of emergencies that we haven't been able to plan for. So we're looking to implement all the things via Excel, but that's still manual. Doing things in Excel and Word is still manual. It just means you have to, when something changes, you have to manually move things around. And there is no automated email or workflow system that goes back out to people. The only way you can do that is through the purchase of software. I don't have a request. I don't have a request for software purchase before you right now, because I wanted to create that IT steering committee first, to tell and make a recommendation for me to consider. Just the department heads already have said, "There are five modules that cost a hundred thousand. We believe you might only need to implement two right away." So that's the off-the-cuff remark that I'm getting from department heads. But I'd like to create the steering committee, make those recommendations. I would like to make the recommendations to the council for what purchasing software to purchase once we have our free cash. It's going to be up to the council, because also I'll do the work to kind of make the recommendation, justify it. The council can either approve those modules, and we can implement them before the next mayor comes, or you can wait until the next mayor comes. So, you know, again, I'm just sort of lining up things for you. In terms of the chief operating officer and the procurement officer, this is all up to how you fund the department. And I'd like to go over that more in-depth during that time versus now in terms of what the scenarios look like, should you fund all or a portion of that, of that budget.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just think that we need a steering committee to determine what the steering committee is going to do. I mean, how, how would you, who in the, who in the city, other than the gentleman from the assessor's office, is going to be somebody that you would put on that committee that would be knowledgeable about software for the city in a department, other than the IT department and, and the gentleman in the assessor's department? There's your steering committee. I mean, everybody else is just going to say, "Oh, I want this for my department, I want this for my department." And if you're not on, if you're not, if your department is not on the steering committee, what are you going to get, you know? Because they're going to be the ones that are making the loudest noise. I, I just, I just don't see a steering committee for IT be, it's, the...
Gentlemen like to respond to that?
Yeah, I, I mean, the concept of steering committee is quite common in, in, in the private industry, right? And what it is, it's, you have the main users of IT, those department heads on it, making a decision to back and support an initiative, okay? And prioritize things, rather than a department putting pressure on the IT director to say, "I need this software." And that group will look at the thing, "Does it integrate with everything I have, okay? It backs these major initiatives, okay?" You need, the thing is, right now you have to look at integration. Not just, you know, the, the whole idea is that, that information is going across all these departments, so you need to have it all integrated. So that, that department looks at that. And it works very well in private industry, and it works well in a number of cities and towns, right? And I think that's the way to go. That way, the, the IT director is going to, you know, the, let's say the DPW department head is very strong and pounds on the IT director, "I gotta have this." Okay, okay. Well, maybe that's not the most important thing for the city. Maybe the most important thing is a purchasing system, you know? So that group will decide that and recommend to the mayor going forward. So it's, it's critical to the, you don't want just the IT director with a single department squeaky wheel type of thing deciding what's going to go. It's too critical, because these systems are expensive and they last a long time. Again, you have Munis since nineteen ninety-nine, right? So you really need to do that, yeah. That's, that's the only way it can work. The other way, it just, it doesn't work.
Outside, Tootie. Counselor Beazall.
I, I agree a little bit with Counsel Joseph on this, that, I mean, this is, this is great, but it's just in writing and it needs to be implemented. You know, usually when I have something like this, or there's something that's gone wrong, I usually ask myself, "So what am I asking the associate to do? Do I understand what the associate's job function is? And how am I supporting the associate?" You know, and then it's easy to set context, follow up, and hold people accountable to it. And when I'm looking at this, I think maybe, and, and I don't know, I, I went online, I, I looked at some of the programs that you offer. And, I mean, a lot of this falls under, I think, team building. If department managers knew what IT's role was, and IT understood what each department did in a team setting, they could all work together and maybe figure out, so what is the best thing? And how to, how do we interact with each other when it comes to setting priorities? When it comes to who needs to do things what? And kind of getting everybody on the same page. I noticed that, when I was on your website, you did, under Oz, you listed as a review of information technology, legal, and purchasing. But in three other communities, you did information technology study. What would the difference be in those two?
Well, those are expensive. That, number one, a lot more expensive and extensive study, right? This, we looked at the organization, all right? So it's, it's a rather high-level look at it. In other communities, we've done an in-depth review of all the systems in all the departments. That's a much, much bigger project. That's, that would be multiple times what this one was, yeah. So this one, we're looking at three areas at, at this level. That, the, we call it an IT assessment, we go down into a lot more depth, yeah, type of thing, yeah.
And I also noticed that you did quite a bit of classes on municipal performance management program. Is that basically teaching department heads how to deal with performance managing within their departments?
We have had the benefit of the Community Innovation Grant from the state, where we actually embed one of our folks in a community one day a week. So we have analysts that will work in four or five communities, spend one day a week, and whatever the community wants to start with, whatever department, usually we start with a public works department, because there tends to be a lot of information, some of which is in boxes or in closets and such, and start to look at, how much time does it take to fill a pothole, how much overtime is being used? And start to get that department accustomed to the idea of using information to help decide how to prioritize and how to organize the work. And then we can move to other departments over the course of the time that we're working with the community. We've had some cities and towns we've been working with for a couple of years right now, and been able to work, move through a lot of the different departments.
And my last question is, I know they talked a lot about people not using computers and things on computers, and, I mean, computers can be scary to some people. Do you find that a lot in cities and towns, that people are still using things that, because they're just not comfortable with computers?
You know, it's, it, it ranges all over the place. And I've worked in a lot of towns and cities in, in the Commonwealth. And so it depends on who's been driving it, how much they've spent, what's the openness, you know? And, and people, people can adapt. I was project manager for the Munis implementation in Springfield, and in Springfield, the school secretaries had typewriters, and most of them weren't electric. They were manual typewriters, okay? They would type out a requisition. It would take two months to satisfy that requisition for supplies, right? They said, "My God, they'll never change." Well, by gosh, they did. They could enter a requisition electronically and staples, or Mason could deliver the supplies two days later, type of thing. So, yeah, they, they changed, because you're doing the same job, but you're speeding it up and you're, and taking out the paper out of it. But, yeah, but ta, they vary all over the place. I mean, you may have, and you may have, within a community, you may have DPW state-of-art and the, and the, and the city clerk operating like eighteen fifty. It really, it's amazing to me, the differences you see in communities, right? And it doesn't matter, you may go into a very wealthy community, and they may be far behind, and a less wealthy community may be way ahead of them. It really, it's all over the place. I wish I could say there was some average, but it varies quite a bit.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Caddy.
I'm having a problem with finding number thirteen, that's the last one in the book. If you could explain the first part about staffing in the Pittsburgh Purchasing Department appears to be tied relatively to the volume of work performed. Could you explain that?
In the report, we looked at two other communities, Salem and Somerville, and I was able to get the volume of purchase orders that they had done and the numbers of contracts. Pittsburgh compares very comfortably to Salem in terms of numbers of contracts, not to Somerville, but Somerville's very busy and, and larger, so that did not strike me as unusual. The, the question's really in the issue of purchase orders, because I was not totally able to get the number of purchase orders issued. In Salem, they did, did you just shy of seven thousand a year? And in Somerville, they do seven thousand and up. So not being able to get the total number of purchase orders was kind of difficult to do. We looked at checks as a sort of a proxy. If you use that measure, you get into the multi-thousands. But it, it wasn't a perfect apples-to-apples. It's just that Salem only has two personnel, you have three. They're also doing procurement for Swamskitt under an agreement that they have.
Salem is?
Yeah, yeah, as well. So it's, it's not an absolute, there was no absolute number. I can't tell you X number of purchase orders equals Y number of personnel, and there is no science to it.
So the comparison between Pittsburgh and Salem was that we had three and they had two, plus they were doing in other cities, some of another city's...
Some of, some of another city's purchase number.
Which brings me to the next line. That you, your recommendation, although increased use of technology in purchasing is warranted, departments that could, could still benefit from at least a platform clerk, which means putting another half-time person into purchasing, where the first one says, yeah, it appears to be relatively high.
And I can understand why that doesn't make sense. There are some low-level tasks that have to physically be done, whether it's opening an intra-office envelope, packaging a bid package so that a potential vendor can come and pick up drawings, or whatever that might be. Your computer's not going to do that.
I certainly understand, but they still conflict with each other.
They, they do. I think I'm saying that it's worth looking at the total number of FTE, but figuring out how to get at least a little bit of clerical support.
One more question on finding number twelve. You talk about restricted hours, and you say if restricted hours are to remain in place. Are you suggesting that it should be unrestricted? Because in the law department, you, you said that department heads want a spur-of-the-moment conversation with the law department. My point with purchasing is, if I'm having a problem with a requisition, I may have a one-line question that could solve my problem. And if I ran into that purchasing agent, "Hey, could you help me with this?" "Oh, sure, you can do this." The problem goes away. So I, see if restricted hours. Can you explain it? Are you recommending that we shouldn't have restricted hours?
I think that is a conversation that's worth holding. I, I don't work there on a daily basis. I see both sides of the issue. If there are constant interruptions, it's very difficult to do the kind of technical work. There's large documents, they're very lengthy, scopes can be highly technical. So having that space to be able to do that without interruption is important. On the other hand, your point is, is well put. Sometimes somebody just has a really quick question. If that question can get answered, then they can move on. And as a support department, your goal is that your customers can keep their workflow going. So, I mean, there, there's anything between, I think they have five hours a, a week of drop-in, you know, that could be expanded. I mean, there's, there's a whole spectrum of possible options that could be done.
The problem I see is I see every department head in the city has an awful lot of responsibilities, as much as people from purchasing. And you're telling them that they have to be, there's only five hours a week allotted for purchasing. Well, the chief's ready to proceed purchasing, and we have an armed robbery or shooting. Well, he just lost his ten minutes with purchasing at that hour. So his question goes unanswered, and it goes into the next week. And, and that's where I'm having the problem.
Sure. I did recommend that no matter what, there should be standing meetings with the heavy user departments once a week. If there's nothing to talk about on the agenda, you can always cancel it. It's much easier to have a standing meeting and then cancel if it's not needed than to try to get into somebody's busy schedule. So information technology, public works, some of those that have really high volumes should have a standing time.
I like your idea of training. That part of this, the training is very important. Okay.
Just like to, before I move forward, follow up on Counselor Caddy's things, and something that you said. Counselor Caddy was talking about the restricted hours, and Counselor Caddy was talking about the other department heads having access and needing time, and that type of thing. And in your response, you did mention that you see purchasing as a support. And I think that i-if the department is a support department, they need to make themselves available to those people that are using them for support in a manner that works for the people that are getting the support, not just for the department that's writing the support. And I think that's what we have happening now. Counselor Deanna Tally.
Thank you. I want to thank three of you for conducting this, and it was, it was required on our part that we get this information. I was hesitant in supporting it, because, like some of the other counselors said, I'm not sure if these will be implemented down the road, but it's good to have something on paper. I have been very critical of these offices for several years now, and I've been here eight years. I don't know the information that you have been given through your audit findings. But this really started to percolate last budget season. And every year for the last eight years, I have gotten repeated phone calls, especially for purchasing, on the gross inefficiencies going on. And, you know, these are documentation, documented pieces of evidence that I have from department heads, who all say the same thing as if they're reading from the same script. I've read the findings. Unfortunately, some of them don't address for me why it takes purchasing sometimes two years to get something through the door. And the most recent example is our airport. The airport manager and the airport commission told the council, told some counselors that they sent out a request to our purchasing office, let's say in July. They didn't get a response back until October. They'd call the office, and they'd go right to voicemail. No one would call them back. Our DPW commissioner has told me this, our wastewater commissioner, our water commissioner, our building commissioner. Everybody has said the same thing. No communication, and there's no training. I spoke to the DPW commissioner last year, and I said to him about the training aspect, because you're absolutely right. He says to me, "Well, we were told three times now in the last few months, we'll get our training, we never got it. I'm eager and willing to get trained." Eight years I've had to hear this, no training. So what you have done this evening is further emphasize the problems that, quite frankly, and this is no criticism of what you did, we all could have done ourselves without spending the twenty-five thousand dollars. Unfortunately, there has been a lack of management in city government, allowing these things to continue. And unfortunately, for whatever reasons there are that I will never understand, no substantive changes have been made. Of course, someone would, some people will disagree with me with that statement, but it's the truth, because I hear the same arguments, the same complaints, every week, and they haven't stopped. And I hope these recommendations are seriously reviewed. But quite frankly, I think this whole audit-finding document should have a blueprint at the top, and this is just my opinion, that says, "This is how the, these are all, all the management issues and the processes issues, this is what the, the, the head of this city is supposed to be doing, and it's not getting done." So now we've got to hire someone at a six-figure salary to do what the executive office isn't doing. And the excuse is going to be, "Because there's so much I have to do." If you're engaged, and if you listen, like I do and like we all do, you shouldn't need an audit to tell you what's really wrong. And I supported the audit, ladies and gentlemen, because I waved the white flag last year, because I couldn't get anybody to listen to me, from what everybody was telling me. Not, these weren't my opinions, these were things I got from the department heads. I said I got to go along with it, because no one's going to listen to me. No one really listens to me here, so we decided to do the audit. And I figured, if we can get a non, an impartial third party, such as yourselves, to look at this and emphasize what you've done, all the problems that need review, I'm reading all these folks, and I'm saying, "You know, it's a little embarrassing to me that we had to do this, because if we were engaged, we would have found this out ourselves." So, that's why I've been so critical, because every year I sit here and nothing changes. Nothing changes. And that's why I know I've upset some in the past about some crit- And that's why I know I've upset some in the past about some critical comments, but I don't know what else to do. I don't know what else to do, because the department heads aren't being listened to. The employees aren't being listened to. So I'm trying to do my best to raise the red flag. And here's another piece of evidence you've given us that does that. I have some, the same concerns as the rest of you about whether these will be implemented. My opinion, they're not going to be implemented. These should have been implemented six or, five or six years ago. It took eight years to get to this point. So I appreciate the work you've done, but there is one thing in these audits that I didn't see, and this is more important to me than anything, is the cost savings. We have a $200 million unfunded liability problem right now in the city of Pittsburgh. We have OPEB and pension. Our pension costs are going up $700,000 every year for the next 35 years. That's more than 50% of our property tax two-and-a-half increase. Our health insurance liability is almost $180 million. So right now, we owe $270 million that we don't have. So I have been pushing to try to get the cost savings. My question for you folks is, very simply, and forget about the apples-to-apples, is privatization a cost savings over not privatization with respect to the liabilities? If we were to privatize, we wouldn't have to pay any liabilities, correct? Pension, healthcare, the whole nine yards. And there are cities and towns throughout our region who do that. And they have a pension and liability system that is well-funded, and we don't. So the costs are a big issue with this for me personally. And unfortunately, I didn't see that in here, and that's probably not, you know, I'm not blaming you for that, it's probably not what was required of you. But the numbers speak for themselves, because I'm trying to save money for the city. I'm trying to do what the mayor's asked everybody to do for years, and that's lower the two biggest budget busters we have. So this is good information that I plan on taking forward and using as a blueprint to emphasize to everybody that now there is a third-party independent firm who has corroborated what we've already known. Just added ammunition for me. So I want to thank you for your time and appreciate the time you've given us this evening. Thank you.
Counselor Kuchmerich.
I'd also like to thank you for being here, and thank you for your patience in answering our questions. Just one question regarding purchasing. You spoke about the difficulty of obtaining the metrics and numbers in order to kind of do apples-to-apples comparison. But it does seem like there are some standard metrics in the field through either purchase orders or checks cut. Is it typical in some municipalities that you have difficulties obtaining the numbers or quantifying some of the work done?
It depends on the community. It really speaks to whether there's an electronic system or a more robust recording system than what you have here. So the two communities that we compared to do have munis modules. So we were able to get the full number of purchase orders and contacts. The lack of technology right now, the handwritten list is very limiting. If the department really does, or the city really does process on the order of 5, 6, 7,000 purchase orders, which is entirely possible, the amount of time to write that down would be limiting. You know, one would never do that. So that is another argument, again, toward having more robust electronic systems so that there is information that can be used to help right-size and to figure out what the needs are.
Is this munis module the industry standard, or are there other comparable options throughout the industry?
Well, you really want to have the same purchasing system that your general ledger and your accounts payable systems on, it all relates.
Do most municipalities have an integrated system that has a purchasing module, regardless of whether it's munis or another software package?
Yeah, they usually do. You don't have a separate, it's usually, if it's munis or another package, it's all.
But are most municipalities typically using technology to their advantage? Are we behind the curve, I guess is what I'm asking?
Yes. In purchasing, yes.
Okay, thanks. And then I'll ask a question regarding technology. So I understand you didn't do kind of a cost-benefit analysis. But did you at all evaluate whether or not we'd benefit from an outsourced model of IT or help desk services?
Well, we didn't, that was not our chart to look at. I mean, you have a small, a very small IT department, two people, small, that's very small.
So I know typically when, you know, when you're looking at IT and having an in-house service, you know, those who are in favor of such, you know, in-house IT department, you'd say, you know, the benefits are daily interaction, really understanding the culture and the culture of both city hall and the department needs, and kind of really having a, you know, a very unique perspective of what goes on from day to day. And with that, you get to provide strategic vision and oversight in kind of guiding the department and technology needs, so that you're advancing both the mission of your own department, but the mission of the city, as well as the individual departments utilize technology. I know you've talked about the need for, I think, a steering committee, which I think sounds like a great idea and is utilized both private and public. But do you feel that there is currently vision, strategy, and kind of a mission of the department? Are we benefiting from having management currently? Do you see that?
That's why I talked about developing a plan, a long-term strategy. This is not unusual. I find most towns don't, okay? Or I've found some cities and towns had a rather extensive 30-page plan, but it's outdated. There was a document that was created and put on the shelf type of thing. So it's an ongoing activity, but that's developed with that steering committee and the IT manager. To look at what is, what's the long-term needs of the city going forward, and then develop what you can, how you go forward, yeah.
Do you feel that currently with the personnel we have, realizing that we do have small staff and they're kind of overworked, do you feel that there is some strategic vision of being able to react to the needs of different departments?
Yes.
Okay.
I do.
Thank you. Counselor Caddy.
Question on information technology finding number four. Couple questions on the answer. In your presentation, you mentioned the telephones, but in your report, there's no mention of telephones. IT is in charge of the telephone system in the city. Is that an IT, is that who should be running that?
Be in charge of the technology, but what IT also does is they also review the telephone bills, the clerical telephone bills, and then find, you know, deal with any issues or problems on billing type of thing.
They also handle the telephones and handle the problems with the telephones. Which goes back to finding number four. You're, and you've said it a couple times just now, that we have a very small IT staff. And what I've seen is I've seen them spending time fixing someone's telephone. And you're recommending help desk should be supporting them. It seems to me you've got two people in information technology that should be doing information technology, and they're doing, tying up their time doing things that they really shouldn't be doing.
Well, we're talking about taking, with a help desk fully staff, that person will deal with the mundane, average calls, the printer's down, I can't get into Word, my PC's down, my laptop's down, type of thing. Or there's a problem, my phone isn't working, that type of thing, okay? IT should deal with the phone technology, but the issue there I was talking about was the phone billing remediation type of thing, dealing with the phone company type of thing. Either have the, either have that help desk person do that and free the IT director and the systems administrator for higher and better work, or maybe transfer that to a clerical function in some other department type of thing, yeah. Want to use them to the highest and best use.
And one thing you may know or not know is we're going to contract out to get a new website. Without the cities, does IT, do they run the website, or do they maintain the website? I, I.
Well, they'll support, IT will support it. It's not, it's pretty, it's pretty common to see where you went outside to have it built type of thing.
I believe that's what we.
It's pretty common, because it's an expertise that in the, some outside firms in the state are very good at that.
But once that website is built, my understanding is that each department head will update their policy for the website.
Right, the content, right.
Yeah.
That's not necessarily an IT, the IT department should be doing that.
The content loading would be by the respective departments.
The IT would make sure the right people had the security to do that, and they probably would set policy for what can be posted and what shouldn't be posted.
What we were struggling with with our old website and our questions on the new one is if we have a department head who does not update their site, who has the authority to make them do it? Is it going to be IT or will be ultimately?
Well, that's a, that's a, you're talking about a common problem, by the way. That's, that's, I don't know, sometime it's the IT would support the mayor type of thing. It's a common problem. You've got to keep it up to date, or it becomes useless type of thing. And people have to understand that. Because that is, that resource is the conduit to the populace today, and that's where people look for information.
Could we slide that over to the steering committee? All right, thank you.
Counselor Deena Tally.
On that point, this is what I'm talking about, is I feel, I feel bad for the IT staff because the fact that there are department heads who are not answering to IT's requests, one email or one all-wide city meeting with the chief executive officer where he or she says to the department heads point-blank, you are responsible for updating your part of the website. I will have my IT staff set up meetings to train you. And if IT asks you to do something with the website, you do it. And if you don't do it, IT has the authority to come to me and let me know what's going on. That's the end of it. Why is it difficult for our IT department, general comment? This is about the first finding for me, about the organizational reporting relation for IT is unclear. All it will take, it's like when someone leaves for vacation, they send an email to their employee saying, in my absence, this is the person you report to. One email would fix that problem, giving the authority. I can't believe I have to even say that. But apparently, the audit firm was not, were you given the city code on the structure of the city? You were? Chapter three, Article three, Section 19 states, with regards to the organizational reporting relationship, it states clearly in the law for the city that the mayor will appoint a manager of information technology who shall direct, plan, manage, and improve the operations of the city's systems, include a data collection, coordinate information systems and telecom services to and among the departments and divisions of the cities, plan, coordinate, participate in the management of these systems and the website, and it goes on and on and on. The code specifically outlines what the duties and responsibilities are of IT and who they report to, the mayor. So if IT is saying they don't know who they report to, that's not their fault, but I won't say whose fault that is. Because this whole document screams of nonexistent management. So there is a code in here that says what their responsibilities are. There is a code in here that says who they report to. But without management, they wouldn't know that. And then people like me criticize them when maybe I should be criticizing somebody else, which I tend to do from time to time. And, but it astounds me that if there's still an issue with any department head about their, about their duties and responsibilities, one email or one meeting would fix the whole thing. Unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Boschman.
Page 11, findings 11, recommendations 11.1. I got a question. If I talk to you about a machinist and I started telling you, I turn this diameter to X amount of thousands, you wouldn't understand me. But I'm going to ask you a question. We're all department heads, 10 of us here, and the council president is the head purchasing. So every bottle represents 1,000 to 50,000, and it goes up and up and up. If Counselor Caddy over there, and we buy this Munich system, and we all have a system to go by, is it going to be easier for the 11 of us counselors to put in our recommendations? Like, if I'm dealing on a million-dollar budget, then I need something done? That I just click on this thing here, this Munich, and I'll be able to fill it all out and have it pass true they had purchasing to make sure it's done right? Can we cut down people or increase the workload and still cut down people if we do this, if we buy the systems?
There's a number of things the system would do for you. One, we've talked about, it would help you gather information about what the yearly activity would be. Also, if there are things that are being bought in multiple departments, they could be bundled together. So if public works needed a PC and the building department needed a PC and somebody else did, and they all sort of put their requisitions in, their requests in at the same time, those could be bundled so that you could buy them through one activity. And then an electronic notice is usually sent to the vendor saying, you just got an order for XYZ thing, so they can fill it out. It'll also be in the system for when the checks have to be cut. They would be tied to a particular purchase order that would already have encumbered the money in the financial system so that it would, it would go right against those dollars. So it would sort of, everything would flow more smoothly.
All right. So if I say yes to the mayor, if she comes to me and I say yes, I just have to do more studying, but I can, I can have these counselors make this product and get it out the door faster.
Well, if you all wanted to buy one of those all at the same time, we could bundle that order, and you could buy.
Well, what happens if we're not? Because, and every department, and every department's different. You know what I mean? So if his department's different than mine, but it's a similarity, almost the same cost, let's presume he's buying that for $10,000 and I'm buying this product for $10,000, two different makes though. This one does not have a pop-out so you can squirt it out, I have to unscrew it to drink it. He gets the pop-out. So they're two different items. Can the prob, can the, the question is, can he, can it go through purchasing in the proper manner, in the right way? That's all I want to know. If we buy the systems to improve the communication, I don't know if I'm explaining it right.
Counselor, I think we don't want to ask them the details of what might come down the road when we have the munis requests come before us. I think then will be the time for us to ask the specifics. But I think their recommendation is pretty clear that they think that we need to get, expand the munis system, and that would help the whole picture of purchasing and communication within the city.
All right, all right. Just add, but there are always people at the beginning of the system. So the people have to be trained, the people have to know what the expectations are, they have to know how to articulate what they need clearly, otherwise the computer doesn't do anything.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, folks. We truly appreciate your efforts on the report and appreciate your presentation tonight. Moving forward on the agenda, finance committee. Counselor Deena Tally. In 09915, just say it, passed or didn't pass, okay?
Very quickly, all items on the finance committee report were adopted unanimously except 9915, which was held very quickly. 9715 was a transfer from police maintenance of buildings to police equipment and repair, $10,000. 100-15, appropriate, $29,600, same be credited to police equipment and repair and charged against available funds. That was adopted. 10115, transfer $8,500 to police other expenses from police equipment and repairs. That was unanimous. 10215, transfer $5,000 from airport expenses to a council.
10215, transfer 5,000 from airport expenses to accounts as follows, 3,500 to airport personal services, and 1,500 to airport personal services overtime, that was adopted. And 9815, transfer 250,000 to other post-employment benefits trust from reserve for OPEB, that was adopted unanimously.
Motion, second, the Finance Committee report be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Public Safety Committee oral report, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met earlier this evening. There were six items on the agenda. 009-15, Counselor Paul Boschman to install cameras at every intersection where there are traffic lights. That was given leave to withdraw, 4 to 1. 25-15, Counselor Tran to develop and implement a limited parking plan on Anhao Farm Road in front of FHS, and install appropriate signage. That was 5-0, and given leave to withdraw. 20, pardon me, 040-15, Counselor Angelo Beazle to amend resident parking from the Clinton Street area, that was put on hold, 5-0. 4115, Counselor Paul Boschman to place a stop sign on Quarry Lane at the intersection of Harry Gary Street. That was amended, well, we were going to amend, 4115, allowing the chief to install children-at-play signs, that was unanimous, 5-0. 11215, Calvin D. Brooks, City Treasurer, to amend Section 169-42 of the code. That was passed, 5-0. And finally, 11315, Counselor Dean Tran and Counselor Mike Kuchmarek to investigate, and if possible, return the electric sign at the intersection of Academy Street and Elm Street back to operational. That was amended for use of cautionary signs, and cleaning up old signs, that was granted, 5-0.
Motion, second, that the Public Safety Committee report be adopted. All, oh, speaking to the motion, Counselor Joseph.
I know that, I know that 0915 was rejected, or given leave to withdraw, for good reason, where you can't put, um, cameras on every intersection, but I, I just, I think that something needs to be done before we have major problems, because there's total disregard for red light and yellow lights in every intersection in this city. And I don't want to, I'm not advocating putting a police officer on every corner, but every time I sit at the intersection of Water Street and Wannusnok Road, I know what color that light is, because when it's red, they go faster, okay? When it's green, they go through the intersection, when it's red, they go through the intersection faster, okay? And it's just a matter of time, they're always pushing it to the limit, and I know that's not the only dangerous intersection, and I know, I haven't seen an accident, so I can't say that the, the accident rate supports it. But, in this, I don't know if it's just in this country, or what in general, but there is a total disregard for a red light, and somebody's going to get killed. So, I think that they, if they're going to stop it at the state level, because you can't identify or give a ticket to the car as opposed to the operator, something has to be done to put enforcement back into red lights. I don't even care about yellow lights, because I may go through a yellow light every now and then. But when people start going through red lights consistently, there's going to be a major problem.
Motion, second, that the Public Safety Committee report be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
12115, up to and including 12315, be sent to Finance.
Second. Motion, second, that 12115 up to and including 12315 orders be sent to the Finance Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
09115 ordinance, ordinance be added, deemed by the City Council of the city of Pittsburgh as follows, that Chapter three, Section 143 of the Code of City of Pittsburgh entitled qualifications be amended by deleting same in its entirety, and by inserting in the place thereof the following language, the members of the council on aging shall be lawful aged and be citizens in the United States, at least nine members shall be residents of Pittsburgh, and up to three members may be residents of other communities who are substantially involved within the Pittsburgh senior community or employed within the boundaries of the city of Pittsburgh. Reference petition 27014. Final reading.
09115 be sent to its third and final reading, ordained and awarded.
Motion, second, that 09115 be sent to its third and final reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Petitions.
12415 up to and including 13015 to its respective committees.
Motion, second, that 12415 up to and including 13015 be sent to their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have motion and second to adjourn, Counselor Beazle.
I just wanted to thank everyone. Go to the ward. 4-5 cleanup, I know across roads, Community Church, Twin City, CDC, DPW Board of Health, Fox Department, McDonald's on John Fitch Highway, Slatteries, Fire Department, City Council, I'm sure that I probably missed some, but I just wanted to thank everyone, it was a absolutely fantastic day. And also, Wednesday, next Wednesday is DPW days, 2 to 5, at the DPW barn.
Counselor Kuchmarek.
I'd just like to echo the sentiments of Counselor Beazle, and that this past Saturday was a tremendous day for the city, having so many volunteers in the downtown and throughout the city who gave their time and their, their weekend to, to make the city a better place. Tremendous movement of pride in the city, and look forward to seeing this again on, in future weekends. Thank you.
Anything else? Motion, second to adjourn, all those in favor?